Over to you, Mick.
Very good. Thanks, Anne-Marie. And thanks, everybody. It's good to get the opportunity to meet with you and see you all. So look, I'm just going to give a brief presentation, PowerPoint presentation on the beach by law and jet ski by law review that we're in the throes of at the moment. So if you just bear with me, hopefully the technology will work for me here. Okay, can you see that? Yeah, good. Excellent.
You okay by me?
Now, can I get this slide? Presentation to start. Okay, again, can you see that there? Okay, is that okay for everybody there? I take that as a yes?
Yes, perfect. Thanks, Mick.
Very good. Yeah, so look, as I say, thanks again for giving me the opportunity. Look, I'll talk briefly to say about the review of the bylaws that we have ongoing at the moment. Look, obviously, we've done the introductions already, but my name is Mick Boyson, but the Environment Section in Kerry County Council. And look, we deal with a range of issues, as I'm sure you're aware, but one of the items we we take responsibility for is management of the beaches around the county. And so it's in that context, I suppose, I'm talking to you tonight. Okay, so there are two sets of bylaws that we have out on public consultation at the moment, and both of which are subject to review. The first of those is the Kerry County Council Beach Bylaws. And now they were originally adopted in 2003. We've reviewed them on a couple of occasions since 2007 and 2013. But look, I'll explain why we're in the process of reviewing them again. The second set of bylaws then is the Kerry County Council Recreational Craft and Personal Watercraft Bylaws, otherwise known as the Jet Ski Bylaws. And again, look, it's a review of an existing bylaw that we have in this situation. So originally, again, adopted in 2007, they haven't been reviewed since. But look, I suppose, again, because of circumstances, we've decided to carry out a review of those as well. Okay, so the reasons for the review, I suppose, in the first instance, look, you might be aware, but I suppose those of you that are familiar with the blue flag situation. So look, as you probably know, we've, I think, thirteen total in total blue flags in the county, certainly up to last year. And they're subject to a series of criteria, which basically are, I suppose, the rules and regulations, the dos and don'ts, the requirements around the blue flag system. So the blue flag process or the blue flag entity is managed internationally by FE. And in Ireland, on Tashka, the management body here in Ireland. So as I say, any local authority or municipality which has applied for for blue flag status for any other beaches or marinas have to meet the criteria that are set out in the terms and conditions that are there. So last year, On Tashka contacted each of the coastal local authorities that have currently had blue flags at that stage, advising of the need to bring in certain changes around the control of dogs and our blue flagged, blue flag areas now. But that's specifically in relation to meeting the criteria number twenty-three, which is to say in the terms of condition of the of the blue flag requirements. Okay, so that was certainly some fairly significant driver on that, on that, in that regard. Secondly, I suppose, look, you know, certain issues arose in relation to the permitting of activities on our beaches. And again, under the current beach bylaws, and we would permit or approve or license certain activities on beaches around the county. And again, I suppose, in the context of that, and in light of certain issues, I suppose, that arose in the last couple of years, we felt that it would be appropriate to look at that as well. Thirdly, then, just in general terms, I suppose, you know, I suppose we're all aware that there's been increased activity at our beaches in the last two or three years for variety of reasons, the wide Atlantic way and the success of that obviously meant that the numbers of people visiting our beaches went up over the last number of years. It also meant, I suppose, an extension to the typical beach season. So in effect, our beaches are busy practically twelve months of the year now at this stage. And in addition to that, then, I suppose, the COVID situation and the supposed to rise in staycationing, you know, again, threw up certain issues around the management regulation of activities on our beaches. Again, as I'm sure you're aware, our beaches were particularly busy over the last two years because of the amount of people that obviously were vacationing at home. So as I say, that threw up certain issues that we felt we probably needed to look at as well. So to go back to the issue of the blue flag criteria, and this is actually the criterion itself, number twenty-three. So it says, I'll read it, access to the beach by dogs and other domestic animals must be strictly controlled. Dogs or pets other than assistant dogs are not allowed on a blue flag beach or in the blue flag area, if it is part of a larger beach. If the presence of pets is permitted by the local and national red legislation, animals are only allowed in the parking area, walkways and promenades in the inland beach area and must be under control. So it's quite clear, and look, as I said, you and Tashka contacted those of us local authorities who have blue flags in place to advisors of the need to meet criteria in twenty-three. And to be fair to On Tashka, I think really that that came about because FE, the international organization, had kind of raised the issue with them directly. So with that in mind, and I suppose, look, we were conscious of the fact that, look, I suppose, the message coming through from On Tashka and from the international jury was that if we didn't bring controls or suitable controls in place into into effect, we were risking losing our blue flag. So ultimately, that was the driver. And look, as I'm sure you're aware, you know, the blue flag system, like in terms of the reputation, the tourism reputation, et cetera, of the county is a significant issue. So obviously, we were very concerned at the risk of maybe losing blue flags or potentially losing blue flags because of that. So with that in mind, then, we looked at, I suppose, the current bylaws, we looked to see what options might be available. We looked at, you know, similar situations, I suppose, in other counties. And in that regard, there would be certainly two or three counties at the moment that already have those restrictions in place or controls in place. One not too far away, Clare, has had restrictions in place for, I think, one or two years at this stage. So we looked at what other countries were doing, and we talked on Tashka. And I suppose what we've come up with was, I suppose, a model that we think will work. And Tashka seemed to be happy enough with the proposal. It's a bit of a balance, I suppose, between meeting the requirements that On Tashka have versus maybe, you know, not being over restrictive on these control issues. So in effect, what we're saying in this particular case and what's set out in the in the draft by law is that a restriction on dogs, with the exception, obviously, of guide dogs and assistant dogs, would apply on all blue flag areas, and I'll come back to that, between the hours of eleven AM and seven PM each day during the summer season. Now, the summer season is defined under the bathing water regulations as the period between the first of June to the fifteenth of September. And in effect, that's the blue flag season. So what we're saying ultimately is that, look, the controls that we're proposing to bring in, they would apply only during the summer season, as I say, between the first of June and the fifteenth of September. And they would apply only between the hours of eleven AM and seven PM. So outside of those hours, people can certainly bring their dogs onto the blue flag area. But thirdly, I suppose, look, we're saying that the restrictions would only apply to the blue flag areas. Now, just to explain that, typically, a blue flag area doesn't encompass the entirety of the beach. And just by way of illustration, I suppose, I have a map just coming up here next with map the banner blue flag area. So those of you who might be familiar with Banner, and it's not an unusual circumstance, to be honest with you, the beach at Banner itself is a couple of kilometers long. It's one I'd be very familiar with, it's quite close to truly, obviously, where I live. And I suppose the blue flag area, just to explain, as you as you come onto the beach at Banner, the blue flag area, the totality of the blue flag area is one hundred and sixty meters of the entirety of the beach. So it's actually relatively small area, and it's defined typically by the lifeguard flag. So more often than not, the blue flag area is, as I say, is delineated on the ground by the blue flag, or sorry, by the lifeguard flag. So you have a flag, obviously, at either end of the the portion of the beach that's patrolled by the lifeguard service. So that's typically the extent of the blue flag on each of those beaches. So as I said, you look, what we're saying in effect is that, look, the restrictions and the controls that would only apply within that blue flag area. So, you know, taking Banner as an example, notwithstanding the fact that the beach at Banner is, as I say, a number of kilometers long, the restrictions in this particular case would only apply over the hundred and sixty-two meters of that portion of the beach, which is subject to the the blue flag itself. Okay, and that's not unusual. Actually, it's quite typical, most that would typically apply in most of the beaches, and should be another case in point, those of you, again, who are familiar with inch, this bit inches, I think, something in the order of four kilometers long. But the blue flag area is actually only about three hundred meters of that entirety. And it's the section of the beach over to the right inside as you come onto the main beach area. So again, look, the restrictions and controls would apply only to the to the actual designated blue flag area, not to the entirety of the beach in these situations. As I say, to apply only during the bathing season, which is the first of June to the fifteenth of September. And during those days, only between the hours of eleven AM and seven PM.
May I ask a question there, Mick? Can you walk through that area to the blue flag area to get to the other area of the beach with your dog?
Yes, and that's, you phrase a good question. I was just going to come to that actually, Anne-Marie, as well, yeah. So look, as you saw in the wording of the criteria, or the criterion, there's an allowance there for what they would call a throughway. So again, look, our proposal would be that if you taking Banner and stick with the map that we have, if you're coming to Banner to walk your dog, you'd park in the car park, obviously, but there would be an area at the rear of the beach, maybe at the back of the sand sandy area, the portion of the beach, where you could walk your dog through without any restriction to get beyond the blue flag area. So look, we'll be allowing or we're providing through ways like that on each of these beaches. Again, Ballyhigh could be a good case in point to know people from New Ballyhigh, but the blue flag area in Ballyhigh is typically in front of the car park in the promenade area. So in the case of Ballyhigh, for example, people walk and their dogs will be able to walk along the promenade. There'd be no issue or control on that to to get an access to beach beyond the blue flag area. So, yes, Anne-Marie, that's in the wording that we have in the bylaw, we're allowing for the provision of through ways or designated routes through those areas to allow people to get beyond the designated area. Okay? So look, it's it's an issue that obviously has raised quite a bit of of comment. I know, look, I'm a dog owner myself, I have two beautiful Labradors, and I do walk them in the beach. So I'm very conscious of, you know, the sensitivities around it. And obviously, it's something that we expect will will generate quite a bit of comment, I suppose, maybe the best way of putting it. And I can understand people's unhappiness generally with the proposal, I suppose. To be fair, we find ourselves in a situation where really we do have to make some move towards putting a control in place because of the fact that, in the absence of that, the risk is that we may risk losing a blue flag or the blue flags. And so I suppose we're finding ourselves unfortunate that position, what, as I say, what we've tried to do is come up with a proposal that probably meets everybody, not everybody's requirements. But I suppose it's it's an effort to try and address the issues that the international blue flag jury have raised and plus trying as best we can to accommodate and allow for people to walk their dogs on these beaches at the appropriate times, you know? Okay.
Mick, if I could just, yeah, comment more than more than ask a question. Like, and this is not, not to challenge the bylaw in any way, I mean, as it stands at the moment, I mean, obviously, we're trying to satisfy the blue flag jury, right? So where we can retain these sites, because from a tourism perspective, we want to draw people to what are pristine beaches. And that's what the blue flag accreditation is aimed at. But if we're only, in the case of the map you were showing in the previous slide, managing three hundred meters of the beach, then it appears to me that we're, I mean, what 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 actual control is that having? So from a practical point of view, I believe the the issue that was raised was the amount of dog waste was the issue, getting into the into the water and as a result then contaminating in that regard. So, I mean, it doesn't seem to me that the bylaw will actually resolve that issue. It'll just displace it further along the beach.
And I suppose the reason for the criteria, you're right, in the sense that, you know, the international jury have the criterion because they feel that there is a risk from dog feces in these situations, right? So that's the ultimate driver, I suppose, for that criterion at the first instance, right? But if you take, I suppose, the Kerry situation, you know, I suppose dog fowling is already covered under national legislations, under the Little Control Act. It's illegal to allow your dog to foul without picking it up. Okay, so that that provision is already there in place. We do patrol our beaches, I'll be honest with you, and we look, we do regular patrols of our beaches, particularly during the summer period, we do, our dog wardens would do patrols in our beaches, and they'd also do them in conjunction with our little wardens. So it is something we're very conscious of, and it's something, I suppose, that, look, we do try and actively deal with and manage as best we can. I think generally successfully, and I suppose, look, there's the enforcement control element of it, there's the education awareness side of it too. And I suppose it's a twofold approach that we look to try and take in these situations. I suppose it's an opportunity for us to kind of raise the issue, you know, with people and to make people more aware of of the issue. There are two slightly separate things in the sense of, look, there's a criterion which have to meet, simple as, and I suppose, look, as I said, the risk would be that if we didn't bring this this control in, that we risked the blue flag. There's the other issue then of of the management and control of dog fowling on our beaches. And I look, I suppose, we do have a system in place to try and deal with that as best we can. And I think generally, it's fairly successful, particularly in, you know, in relation to, say, the busier beaches and the areas where most people are kind of congregating on a beach, you know? So, look, I don't know what I agree necessarily, that, look, we're pushing the problem or at risk of pushing a problem maybe to a different location. We do try as best we can to manage that situation. I do, as I said, look, there's an enforcement aspect to it, but there's also the the educational awareness side of it. And look, that's something will continue and maybe, you know, beef up over time, you know, with the view to trying to deal with that.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks. I appreciate that. And I mean, it is a very challenging thing. We don't want to be, I suppose, overtly managing these natural amenities to the detriment of people's enjoyment. I mean, we're not a dog owning family. I mean, my my issue as my kids have gotten older has moved from worrying about dog feces to whether or not the dogs are on a lead, because my kids aren't massively delighted with dogs jumping up on them. And the bigger problem, in my view, is these extendable leads and the fact that people leave their dogs off leads when there are kids around who may not be comfortable, and as a result, they get scared and it just makes the place less enjoyable for them. So, I mean, I don't know if it forms part of this bylaw as well, but the the issue of people not having their dogs on leads is a problem. That should probably be addressed separately, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and again, look, I suppose, there is in the legislation that's in place, there's a Control of Dog Act, Control of Dogs Act, which says that, look, dogs need to be under what's called effectual control, and this was a bit of interpretation around that. But again, getting back to the draft that we have in place, okay, we'll we'll be restricting dogs on the on the blue flag area during certain specified times of the day during the bathing season. In addition to that, as I said, you look outside of those areas, people will be able to bring their dogs on to the blue flag area. But we have a requirement during the bathing season that that would be done only when the dog is on a leash. So we are, again, looking to try and hear your concern on, and I suppose, look, we we do get those kinds of concerns raised to us on a regular enough basis. So again, with that in mind, we've put in that second element of of the control that during the bathing season, in the blue flag area, during those specified areas, you can't bring a dog on to the beach, notwithstanding, okay, the maybe the true way, et cetera. But outside of those areas during the bathing season, while you can bring your dog on to the blue flag area, it'll have to be on a leash. Again, that's that's something we've put into the into the bylaw. And again, I suppose, we're just mindful of that that very point, you know? Okay.
Could I come in there from falling on from that perspective there? Yeah, it certainly is a problem in North Kerry in terms of and while everybody likes dogs. And as previous speaker said, there is a problem with people having their dogs on the beach, not on leashes, and running wild, really. Huge numbers of dogs, small children around, elderly people, dogs running towards them, you know? And there's difficulties for people when they want to go on the beach to have a pleasant walk. And they end up having to leave because they're afraid their life in case they get knocked down by large dogs, Alsatians, et cetera. So I think the draft bylaws, while they are an improvement on the previous ones, they still have a de minimis type of approach. Because from my experience and the evidence would say as well that as a surfer and swimming in the water, the dog feces, the tide comes in, takes it out, as it does with litter. We run campaigns in NKF, leave only footprints. And that has been effective and also trying to enhance people's understanding and education of taking their litter home. But in relation to the the focus on ensuring that there's a specific time for people taking their dogs on the on blue flag beaches, I believe that it's needs to be extended to all beaches, really. Because, say, for example, the Ballybunian North Beach has lost its blue flag. And quite a lot of other surfers have said to me as well, when they've been out surfing or swimming, that there's feces in the water which will compromise the, you know, blue flag beach status. It's lost, last year it lost its blue flag status. But, you know, by excluding the regular beaches as well from the bylaws, I think is creating further problems. Because we need to ensure that the beaches not only are pristine, but the blue flag status applies to the water quality. Also, so I was hoping that it could look at a more inclusive approach to our beaches because people frequent both beaches. And, you know, having it that you're going to have the beach that's blue flag, which restricted hours for taking their dogs, then you're going to have an accumulation of dogs on the particular north beach, the ladies beach, where is the most frequented beach for families and small children, in actual fact. So I'm not sure if if that would be possible, Mike, is it going to a public consultation anyway, the bylaws?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's actually out for public consultation at the moment. That's one of the reasons I wanted to talk to you tonight, is that, look, it's currently out for public submissions at the moment, it will be up to the first of April. So we're accepting submissions from the public and elsewhere, directly into ourselves, up to the closed business on Friday, the first of April. Okay, so what I would suggest is that, look, you know, obviously, there are people that have variety of different opinions out there. And look, what we're encouraging people to do is maybe make a submission and kind of raise any issues or concerns or comments that they might have. And again, what happens then, I'll explain as we get towards the end of the presentation, how exactly the consultation process works. But in summary, look, whatever submissions come in, we consider, we look at. The whole process then goes back to the elected council, and they make the final decision as to whether the by the draft is adopted at all. And if it is adopted, you know, whether it's adopted in the format that we present to them or whether they want to make their own changes to it. And actually, we're required to submit a report to them detailing what submissions we've received and what the content of those submissions was. So any submissions that come in get presented to the members for consideration as well. So what I would encourage people to do, look, if if people have opinions, like like you've just outlined there, look, it's an opportunity to to raise those issues with us by way of a submission. And look, they'll all be considered and looked at and presented to the council, and they'll they'll obviously have a look at it and consider the merits or otherwise of that. Just on Ballybunin, we're reasonably fairly confident, actually, we'll get the blue flag back this year coming. As we saw, slight improvement in water quality last summer. Sufficient, I think, to allow us come back into the blue flag realm. So I'd be reasonably confident we'll have a blue flag again in Ballybunin North next summer. But I hear what you're saying, what I would suggest, I suppose, really is, if you if you could, or if you're happy to do that, that you might make a submission and kind of outline the points you've made to me here, just by way of a submission.
Yeah, okay, and Mike, because even apart from the blue flag status and the requirements there, there's the real aspect as well of health and safety, particularly for small children, toddlers, you know, on a beach. And when people are are not prepared to pick up dog feces and dispose of it properly, what we find as well is that if they're going up the cliff path, for example, that the plastic bags, they may put it in a plastic bag, but they throw it over the side of the cliff into the ocean. It's quite incredible, you know?
They go, they do a difficult bit and then close it out, exactly.
So I just had a quick question. Are Clean Coast groups involved in this, or are they they will be making separate submissions?
Look, I suppose we've done our best to get the message out there that, look, this is the that the process is ongoing. Look, if we haven't, we'll certainly need to do that. Yeah, look, if we haven't kind of contacted them directly to make them aware of it, then we'll certainly be doing that, you know? It's a fair point, actually. But, yeah, I suppose that's the purpose even of tonight, is to try and get the message out as widely as we can to people that, look, this is a process that's ongoing at the moment, and look, people have an opportunity to make comments if they feel they want to do that, you know?
Yeah, because it's only a couple of weeks, really, before, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but look, we've tried our best, as I say, to get the message out there in different ways, social media and website and various other means, et cetera. So, look, you'd hope that that the message is getting out there, has got out there fairly widely. But look, certainly, we can see, do we need to make direct contact with the Green Coast groups? We can look at doing that if we haven't already.
NKF do a lot of work on that in relation to water quality and protection of the marine and coastal area. You know, and the sand dunes, integrated coastal zone management, all of that, and protection of the beaches. And as I said, our Leave Only Footprints campaign, and, you know, bring two bags, which is trying to focus on the anti-litter, which is an ongoing process, really. But hopefully, there are changes and positive moves in that regard, you know? So, anyway, thanks, Mike.
Any other questions, Bill? Sorry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was I was only going to ask, Mike, you've obviously tried to to square a circle or circle a square. As far as those that are overseeing the the blue flag beaches are concerned, because the original comment has obviously come from them. Would they be happy with this? Because, to a certain extent, I agree with other speakers, because basically it hasn't solved the problem at all. It just on paper looks as though it's going to solve the problem, but of course it won't.
Okay. Look, I suppose what we've what we've done is spoken to On Tashka, now On Tashka are the management agency in Ireland for on behalf of FE. So they administered the the scheme in Ireland. So, look, as a group, local authorities of local authorities, we've met with On Tashka, and we've kind of discussed, I suppose, options with them. Our understanding is that, look, what we're proposing by way of the bylaw would be satisfactory, would be, you know, that they'd be they'd be happy enough with that. So can I give a guarantee? Probably not, unfortunately, but look, I suppose the best we can do is get a steer from On Tashka as to whether they feel it's 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 something that that they're happy with. And look, the indications at the moment are that they are, as I said, I suppose, one or two other counties have already gone down this road in previous years. And look, again, the indications seem to be that, look, those systems are working okay in those counties. And look, On Tashka, again, seem to be happy enough with what they have in place by way of the controls, you know?
Oh, well, we wait and see. I think it's, I think possibly what we've heard about dogs and leads and running around, possibly that can be dealt with by other forms of bylaw, as is done in in parks and some recreation areas where dogs must be kept on a lead.
Yeah, and again, look, you know, I suppose the opportunity is there for people to to make these comments, you know? That it's, as I say, look, it's it's that's the purpose of the exercise, to give people the opportunities, you know, to to raise those points and raise concerns that they might have, you know? So this is this is how we find out what people's views on on these kind of things are, you know? So that's that's the merit and the exercise, really, is to is to give people that opportunity to to kind of raise these things with us, these issues with us, you know?
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so, look, while maybe the headline issue is the control of dogs, there are a couple of other items that we've we've included by way of changes or additions to the bylaw. And I've just kind of outlined them, outlined them briefly here. And so we're making an offence to fail to comply with an instruction from a lifeguard or interfere with any lifeguard service. We're proposing restrictions on the lighting of fires in dune areas. So in effect, the draft says, look, you can't light a fire in in a dune area. And we're also saying that, look, you can't light a fire anywhere else that might pose a risk, you know, a risk of fire spread or whatever. We're proposing a ban on the use of certain inflatable water devices at our beaches. And again, this is probably in light of, I'm sure you're aware, and I've seen the reports in the media of the last few summers of unfortunately, situations where people maybe get into difficulties and situations where they're using inflatable craft or or toys or whatever. We're proposing a ban on horses on our blue flag beaches, again, very similar to the controls we're talking about on in relation to dogs. Almost identical, actually, in that regard, we're saying between the hours of eleven AM and seven PM each day that there'd been effectively a ban on horses during the summer season within the blue flag area. And now, just, it's important to note that the restriction that we're proposing here wouldn't interfere with, you know, the holding of traditional horse racing events. I know there were some concerns raised by some of the elected members around that. So, look, what we're saying is that, look, it wouldn't interfere with, you know, certain racing events that would be held on beaches traditionally. And we're looking to bring in some clarifications on on issues around the suspension or revocation of beach permits. As I said, before, we would license and approve certain activities in our beaches. And so again, it's just given us scope in that regard, and maybe a bit more clarity in relation to some of the issues that that might apply in that case. We're looking to introduce some clarifications on the issues which may be considered in the context of a beach permit application. And again, look, we're just, I suppose, we're taking the opportunity maybe to clarify and and kind of fine tune a few issues there. And lastly, then, we're looking to increase the fixed penalty notice currently based on the bylaws up to seventy-five euros. So the current fixed penalty notice rate is fifty euro, we're looking to increase that to seventy-five euro. And just to explain, fixed penalty notice would apply, it's an on-the-spot in effect. So, you know, for relatively minor breaches of the bylaws, we have the the scope currently to issue a fixed penalty notice up to the value of fifty euro. And we're looking to increase that to seventy-five euro. Okay, so any questions or?
Yeah, Mick, I just had one, one very brief question. The issue of driving a motor vehicle on on beaches, whether it be a car, an SUV, quad bike, a motorcycle, has that been addressed in this, or will it be addressed in this, or is it addressed elsewhere?
It's addressed. It's it's addressed probably, you know, as I said to you, look, we have the bylaws in place for a number of years and and there are, I suppose, restrictions around the use of vehicles. As is, and just to explain that, you know, we divide it up into general vehicles and also off-road vehicles, so there would be restrictions applying in in both respects. So we would list and maybe just explain, I probably should have done this at the start, but, you know, uh. The current beach bylaws and the draft have a series of schedules at the back of them, and the schedules list the beaches that different provisions of the bylaw would apply to. So same relation to, there's a general, uh I suppose, requirement around the use of vehicles on any beach, and what we say there is that, look, in relation to any beach. Uh you can't drive or park or use a vehicle uh in any way that might pose a nuisance or a danger to the public or whatever, or to the environment. That's a general uh provision that's that's in the bylaws is, but on top of that, again, there are a list of beaches on which. We say you can't use a vehicle at all, and there's quite a lengthy list in that, and I suppose they'd be the, you know, the busier beaches and more popular beaches and the more environmentally sensitive beaches, so. That's already in the bylaw, we're not actually, we're not actually proposing to change that, because, look, I suppose it's something that we feel is probably working reasonably well as is. Uh and then we've similar controls in relation to off-road vehicles, the likes of quad bikes and and uh off-road motorbikes and that kind of thing as well, so. We already have provisions under the existing bylaws, to be honest, we're not proposing to change that because we feel it probably works reasonably well as is, um but again, look, if. You know, we've had one or two submissions already, you know, around vehicles and the use of vehicles, maybe on some of the smaller, quieter beaches and look, again, they'll be considered as part of the. As part of this process, so again, there's that opportunity for people maybe to look at the restrictions that we have in relation to vehicles and see, are they okay or happy with that? And if, you know, if they have any suggestions around maybe changes to that or whatever, then look, again, it's an opportunity for people to to make those points, you know.
Thanks, I mean, what's coming to mind is Paul Gorm out near Barrow, um. Like, there's no, there's no car parked there as such, um but there's an awful lot of people that park their cars there.
Yeah.
Um my parents certainly did, uh going back years, um but there's also. Like called gurriers going out doing donuts, because it's a very flat, hard beach.
Okay.
Um that's one issue where the number of cars is very low and restricting them might be problematic.
Yeah.
Um without the development of of infrastructure, but an area that has significant infrastructure already is Inch Beach. And I saw a horrific photograph of Inch Beach from last year, um where there must have been two or three hundred cars. Parked in long rows, which meant that if you were accessing the the beach by anything other than a vehicle. You had to essentially run a gauntlet with your children of people parking and driving in an uncontrolled environment. Um, and I suppose that's a concern, I mean, really, if there's no space to park in the car park, you should find a different beach, but. I I can imagine that will be highly contentious if you were to try and address it, but. I mean, they're they're the issues that pop to mind when I think about driving on beaches, you know, there there are others, but they're fairly minor in comparison to those two.
Okay, uh Paul Gorm first, I'm pretty sure we have a submission actually along those lines for Paul Gorm, so that'll be considered, but again, if, you know. You know, it's the opportunity maybe for people to raise those issues, I suppose in relation to Paul Gorm, you're right, there isn't parking available, so, look. There may be a need to continue to allow people to park or access the beach, but maybe the inappropriate use of a vehicle on the beach. Is already, it's already prohibited under the bylaws is, and as I say, you know, if you remember, I I said, look, there's a general. Uh prohibition on the use of a vehicle on a beach which might pose a risk or danger to people and and look, what I suggest in that regard is. That we do have enforcement wardens around the county, so for example, we've we've five municipal district enforcement officers based, one in each of our municipal districts. And we have staff ourselves, obviously, as well in the environment department, so look, if there are issues arising around that, then, look, I'd encourage people to let us know and we'll. If we have somebody available, we'll certainly go out and and try and deal with it on the day or whatever, you know, so. Uh, you know, there are already restrictions and and prohibitions around the unsafe use of a vehicle on the beach as is in general, you know, that applies to all of those beaches. Including Paul Gorm, in relation to Inch, yeah, look, there are particular issues around Inch because of its popularity. Um and like you say, I I was back there last summer on a good summer's day and you can have. Couple of hundred cars parked, exactly, you're absolutely right, look, I suppose we've we're trying to find an alternative parking arrangement, if that's possible, okay. Um and yes, I agree with you, you know, ideally, we'd like to see no parking on the beach, I mean, look, everyone would prefer that if if at all possible, we'd we'd. We'd have no cars in the beach at Inch, but I suppose the difficulty is to say yourself, is that, look, because of its popularity. Uh we've we've a certain limited capacity in the in the car park that's there, but. You know, it just, I I don't know how how feasible it would be to just to stop people parking on the beach without an alternative. And I suppose that's something we're looking to try and address, um and it's been looking, something we're looking to try to address for quite a while, I'll be honest with you. It's it's, I suppose there are moves afoot to see, can we kind of identify an appropriate site in the vicinity that would allow, you know, even an overfull full car park situation apply, you know. That's what the reality is, yeah, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I think the problem here is actually car use rather than the beach, so, I mean, you could, you could, you could probably pave the entire thing and you still wouldn't have enough space, so. I mean, the lack of any alternative to using a character that's there, but, yeah, I'm conscious that I'm consuming a lot of this meeting, I'd like to be quiet now.
All right, you're fine, and you're absolutely right, look, you know, the number of days when you have significant number of cars on on Inch is dependent on the weather, but B. It's it's it may be a handful of days in the year, so this is the question, do you provide parking for a couple of hundred cars that's going to be a car for a car park that's going to be used maybe. At most ten days in the year, so their balance is to be kind of struck there, but you're absolutely right, I mean, we probably need to be looking at an alternative ma- means of. Of getting to these beaches or whatever, you know, um but look, I hear what you're saying and look, it's something we're we're certainly very conscious of in that regard, you know. Any other question or comments just before I move on there?
No, I think we'll let you move on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Um, Marianne, could you keep it till the end? Would that be all right? I'm just conscious of the time.
Sure, yeah, okay, thanks very much, thanks.
Uh just continuing on, so with the with the, what I call the jet ski bylaws, even though they apply to more than just jet skis, they also apply to smaller watercraft like. Like powerboats and the like, but again, we've had bylaws in place since two thousand and seven in relation to that that area. Uh they're made under a different set of 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 different pieces of legislation, primary legislation, but in effect. Just to explain, again, we have a schedule in those bylaws, uh listing certain beaches in the county and certain inland waters in the county on which. Uh we've restrictions around the use of jet skis and and personal recreational craft, um so again, taking an example, um take. One of our typical blue flag beaches, what the bylaw in effect says is that you can't use a jet ski, taking a jet ski as an example, that you can't use a jet ski within three hundred metres of the shoreline. Um so in effect, that restriction applies to most of our popular and busy beaches, um and has been in place since two thousand and seven. I'll be straight with you as well, it hasn't been an issue really up to recently, because, look, there wasn't that much jet ski usage and ownership in the in the country as it was. That has changed again because of COVID and staycationing, et cetera, and look, people maybe have a bit money saved, et cetera, we're definitely seeing increased use in the in in. That area, we're seeing more jet skis, jet ski ownership has gone up, it's definitely seeing more jet skis been used around the country. So with that in mind, again, we're putting out our bylaw just to see, you know, are people happy enough with what's already in there. Um around those certain restrictions, et cetera, and also we're looking to maybe add on little bits and pieces that we feel are appropriate, so in that regard, we're looking to. Include a requirement that people using a jet ski must, in accordance to the bylaw, wear a personal flotation device, life jacket, et cetera. Uh and secondly, we're looking to expand the list of inland waterways to which the bylaws would apply, so at the moment, the bylaws as as is. Uh in terms of inland waters, uh Lachitan is the only inland water that's on our list at the moment, we're looking to expand that out to include the likes of. Uh Waterford Lake, Carra Lake, um and one or two others as well, so it's just something we're kind of conscious of and mindful of, but, look. You know, again, the purpose of the exercise is to get people out, you know, aware of the fact that they're out for review and give people the opportunity to comment if if they feel they want to do that. Just in terms of the process then, so as I said to you, look, um both sets of draft bylaws are out for public comment at the moment, so they're available for inspection at. At our own offices and obviously online as well on the on the website, et cetera. Um and we're accepting comments and submissions up to, as I say, Friday, the first of April, close of business on Friday, the first of April, submissions can be. Sent in either in in handwriting or whatever, hard copy writing or by email, et cetera, to the address that we have there, and as I say, all our details are on the way, on the KCC website. Um but you can contact me or the environment department directly if you need any any assistance on that. As I said earlier on, following completion of the consultation process, a report and the outcome, along with details of any proposed changes to the draft will be presented to the elected council for consideration, so. As I said to you, the submissions that come in, we collate those, we prepare a report, uh which goes to the elected members, and that report will outline what submissions we received and the issues that were raised in those submissions. Um and then we present the final version of the bylaw, draft bylaw to the members, um the adoption of a bylaws, what we call a reserve function, it's up to the members to. To decide whether they adopted and if they do, in what format they adopted in, um and it goes by by vote to the. The decision that is is by vote of the council, so they obviously look at whatever submissions have come in and the content of those and then make a call and as to what they feel is the appropriate version of the bylaw if they go adopting it. And alternatively, they might decide not to, but look, as I say, ultimately, that decision would be a matter for the council. Okay, so, look, that's that's my presentation, but look, I'm quite happy again to to deal with any questions or comments or or anything that people might want to raise with me.
Thanks, Mick, I think Marianne had a question there. Yeah, just very quickly, uh Mike, in the absence of alternative sustainable travel options and. Uh particular problems, obviously, throughout a number of beaches in Kerry, and for example, in relation to. Very busy weekends, there's uh been an increase in parking of Jeeps and vans, et cetera. On the south beach, on that slip road down uh to towards the main strand, you're probably familiar with it before you go down further onto the long strand. But um this was a problem that was very evident, obviously, with the increase in traffic and tourism uh there. Last summer, so at the weekends, and who would you recommend as being the best person to contact? You know, you refer there to the environment department for enforcement, or would it be the guards or?
Um it would be the guards or the council, I suppose, you know, I suppose we manage. The bylaw actually doesn't apply to the to the the surface car park in in Bali Bonin South, at the beach in Bali Bonin South. Um so it would be the guards, I suppose, in the first instance, I'll be honest with you, um as I say, we have, you know, we have staff in the area, we have a municipal district enforcement officer in the area. For example, um so, look, there may be options for for our own staff to deal with it. Um but I suppose if there's an issue on the day, it's probably the guards in the first instance, I'll be honest with you, but look, it's like, it's one of those things that, look, if there's a persistent problem or a regular problem. Then really, I'd suggest maybe talking to our local area officers, which would be the stall, and maybe explaining the issue to them, and they could maybe arrange for for. For the issue to be kept an eye on over the weekend, like our our enforcement people actually work over the weekend, so particularly during the summer summer season when our beaches are busy. Um they're out and about and they do cover both the beach area and, you know, the parking areas and the roadways around it, so. I'd say if it's on the day, it's probably the guards you'd talk to, but if there's a persistent or repeat problem like that, I'd I'd suggest talking to the the area office and the stall.
Yeah, it seems to be a staffing problem and that, because, eh, you know, it's just an issue there.
Okay.
That um has come to people's attention and um certainly for weekends, you know, it's difficult to get. Um, certain items like that, and just if you could very quickly expand on. Number seven in relation to prohibited acts, part F, which refers to lighting fires, including. Uh lighting a barbecue on any part of the beach which comprises of sand dunes, so I think, um. In in terms of interpretation of that aspect, if you could maybe expand on that, because. From our perspective as, um you know, protecting the environment would seem. That it would not be appropriate to be lighting fires on a beach anyway.
Okay.
And there isn't any um reference in that either to bonfires, which is. Uh, you know, an issue, and I know, uh as far as I know, I think Clare County Council, their. Each bylaws have included that aspect in us, now, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but I think it would be important to. Um, probably provide clarification on the aspect in relation to. Uh that section when it says comprises of sand dunes, but certain beaches would have sand dunes on them, other beaches may not. They may have cliffs or they may just, eh you know, have a flatter area, uh like, say, for example, in Beale Strand. They wouldn't have sand dunes as such, or cliffs or any other aspect, and uh some of the beaches around Trilly also. So, um.
Um, okay.
Um just Mick, before you start answering that, could I, oh, yeah, I was gonna ask you to.
Thanks, you beat me to it.
Yeah.
Um, okay, just to clarify that, look, that's a new um addition to the by to the to the bylaws, we don't currently have any. Specific restriction around fires or fire control in in the bylaws is, I suppose, from from on that is, look, we have had some significant fires. In doing areas, particularly around the end of county in in the last two or three years, so I suppose with that in mind, we felt that, look, we needed to. To put in something specifically around that, I suppose, the, you know, we've, as you said yourself, you know, the restriction says, look, no fires and no barbecues. Within the doing areas, really on the risk basis, you know, in the sense that, look, it's high risk, you know, to be lighting any fire in a doing area, unfortunately, is just, that's a risky activity, which we'd like to stop. Um, off the top of my head, from what I can remember, the restriction is fires full stop, that includes barbecues within the doing areas. As we're outside of the doing area on the general beach area, then, look, we haven't restricted, I suppose, in general terms, what we've said is, look. Um you can't light a fire in a way that that poses a risk, eh either to people, you know, in terms of personal safety or of of maybe fire spread, okay? And again, look, maybe these are things that people might like to make submissions on, but I suppose we didn't want to put an outright ban on on fires on our beaches as such, because, look, people do. You know, they bring a barbecue on to the beach, sandy part of the beach, and look, once it's well managed, well controlled, there shouldn't be an issue there. Um, you know, so from that point of view, we decided not to go with a full ban on the beach area, I'm talking about the sandy beach or the shingle beach area. Um but again, I suppose that's the purpose of the exercise is to give people an opportunity, maybe to to raise comments or concerns that they may have, I suppose, we looked at in the context of, well, what's the highest risk? The highest risk is lighting a fire in the doing areas, so we said, look, there's a merit and and an outright ban on those areas, but on the beach itself proper, we felt, look, we'd know certain flexibility there. Maybe tell people to light a barbecue or whatever, you know, but again, it's the purpose of the exercise to give people the opportunity to to raise these concerns, you know.
Okay, thanks, Mary, thank you.
Right, no problem at all.
Um, so any more questions for Mick then?
Very interesting topic, and I think you can probably see everyone's enjoying the conversation.
Good to see, good engagement there, it's great that people are actually.
Yeah, and I think, you know, uh one of the successes that I've seen from the council in recent times has been the public webinars that have really. Particularly around the county development plan and other topics, they've been really successful, like they've had upwards of a hundred and fifty plus of participants. And um you know, I think it's it's really, it's a powerful way of of engaging with people, obviously, in a small forum like this, it's great, because we can have a back and forth. And it's it's a conversation as much as anything else, um but I think a webinar, that could be really valuable and.
Yeah.
Uh it may be, maybe getting on now to be doing it for this particular, I mean, obviously, if you can put it out of the hat and you can get it done next week, great, but. Uh and I was quite happily.
I know, yeah, yeah.
Um but um I I just think for for such public consultations, considering how comfortable the general population are with these. With this format, um I think there's, uh uh particularly for the stuff that's that's potentially contentious or draws draws a lot of comment, as you described it earlier on. Um it can be a great way of, because you're 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 explaining it in such a clear and concise way and giving good rationale behind it and talking about the process. I think there's a real value in that kind of an engagement, so I'd encourage definitely more of it.
I heard.
So I would say firewall it a little, so you're not getting bombarded like you are getting bombarded this evening.
It's okay, yeah, we're, I suppose, we're learning all the time, and you know what I mean, look, I'm straight, I'm of the age which, you know, technology, once they pass me by, but look, I'm learning. Really, as I go along, you know, and like, two years ago, I wouldn't have been able to do this kind of thing, so, look, for a guy my age, I suppose, look, I am learning, but I I hear what you're saying, and absolutely right. The likes of the webinars is a bit of revelation, having kind of been involved in one or two myself on the other side. Um and it could definitely something we'll look maybe to make use of into the future, whether we do with this particular process or not, but you're absolutely right, it's a fantastic medium to to. You know, to get messages out there and give people an opportunity to come and to and fro back and forth on it, you know, so, yeah, we'll definitely be be looking at that as an option in the future, yeah.
Uh leave you with one last comment to just surround the bylaws themselves, when the bylaw actually gets passed. A a an understandable and digestible sign on the beaches, just to really deliver the message would be brilliant, so.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
I hear what you're saying, absolutely, I suppose, look, the wording of the bylaws, it's legalese because it is a legal document, it's a piece of legislation, so it has to be worded in the way that it is, and I accept fully, it's not. It's not readily accessible to a lot of people, so you're absolutely right, plain English is the way we need to be going from here on in, and look, I'd like to think that, yeah, whatever we get out. And actually, I suppose, again, the conversation we're having at the moment is maybe moving away from signage, because, look, some of our beaches are like Lollipop Town, because there's a sign for everything.
Yeah.
I suppose we're talking about technology, but actually, most people get information through their phone these days, so rather than peppering our beaches maybe with information, we'll have to have some physical information on the beach. How we do that is maybe something we'll look at maybe creatively, but the key thing I think we're learning is that, look, actually, it's by way of the internet, et cetera, and getting the information out there. That's the way most people are getting their their information these days, so that's something we'll be looking very closely to.
Very, thanks, Mick.
Very soon.
I see, yeah, Mary and Caroline have their hands up, and Mary will go to you. Okay, um, yeah, and, yeah, just a couple of things, thanks very much, uh like, um. I suppose, I'm just thinking as 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 you're going through about. Um, I suppose I'm just thinking as 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 you're going through about all of these changes and many people aren't really thinking about perhaps, you know, the impact of their dogs, the impact of fires and so on. I think there's a huge education, uh, piece to be done. And through maybe the Clean Coast Groups, uh, through even informal groups that are meeting. I think there's a whole, uh, I suppose, influencing, um, aspect that can happen. Um, because I really think, you know, as a dog, former dog owner, you know, um, he he died or she died. Um, you know, it's it's not something we've all, we all have have thought about. And same way, people didn't think about the impact on dunes. So, yeah, I think, um, there is a huge education piece that that needs to be done. And maybe the Clean Coasts, all those swim groups that are all over, um, Kerry now. You know, there there's two options right away. And I see people out there every time after swim, going for a walk, gathering up plastic, taking it away, putting it into a bag, you know. Um.
There's definitely a network out there. There's a ready-made network that we can tap into with that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's important.
In that regard as well, just to be aware, we haven't had an environmental awareness office for quite a while.
That's right.
Built that post there recently. Um, so the person in question, Breida Marry, she'll be dealing with both environmental awareness and climate change. Um, I suppose the awareness aspects of both. So, look, thankfully now that we'll have somebody back in the role again, it gives us the scope to start making those connections again with the networks, et cetera, and maybe getting the message out there that way. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Then, thanks, Mary. Caroline.
Well, thanks very much, Mick. I just wanted to say, I thought the clarity of the presentation was terrific. And I think it gives people food for thought and also to take the responsibility to make a submission as well. Now that everybody knows the content of it as well, people can now make a submission. I also think it's great that we've actually recorded the session or we'll get it up on the YouTube channel as soon as possible. And also, we'll put it out in the newsletter. We've already put the mu- the information out, but we'll follow it on with that. And I totally agree with Mary. I think it's a great opportunity, following on from that, to do this whole education and awareness as well. And make people aware of the impact and what they can do as well. So I I think going forward from this, there's also great opportunities.
Very good. Caroline, thanks a minute. And listen, thank you all for your interaction. It was great to, it was a conversation as much as anything else, which is what the purpose of the exercise really is.